I hereby call to order this September 23rd work session. So, we are now in session. I'd like to pass the mic to Councilmember Johnson for a moment.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, we have a little presentation tonight. This is a special day. Today is the town manager's anniversary. This is the day Martha was hired by the town council six years ago. So, we just wanted to give you this. You can put it closer to you now. You need to put more water in there because it's...
Thirsty.
Yeah, and I was afraid it was gonna spill, so...
Okay.
And so, we just wanted to say, "Thank you, Martha." We obviously appreciate you. We appreciate what you do. The council is grateful for your service. We're pleased and happy that our staff has you to lead them day in and day out. And most importantly, we're pleased that our citizens have you leading our town day in and day out. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to pass to staff to facilitate the discussion of our CIP and bonds.
All right. So, yes, Jeannie's gonna pass out some stuff. As we mentioned to you, we're flexible and fluid to work through these sessions. So, a couple openers about what we've got and how we want to proceed and how potentially that leads into the next several work sessions. So, I think first from Jeannie and I, we want to say, "Thank you for all the effort that you made to put some thought into what was a lot of work outside of a council meeting." And we learned a couple things, probably have some additional comments that you might want to make that we tried to put together a simple and easy way. Perhaps it would've been better if we had been able to walk through how to do some of the exercises or what we were looking for before you did that. We also made a, just a formatting issue with one that we could work through, but you may have noticed and may have confused that. And we have a number of follow-up questions that we have for individual council members individually, just to clarify as we've looked through and started to review and evaluate the information. We felt like we had enough to proceed, especially with talking about the bond policies and the prioritization exercises, except for the paired comparisons. We're still working on putting that together and how to synthesize that most effectively for you. And we are proposing to bring that information back at your October 8th town council meeting. That will also allow us to align it with the narrative information you gave us about what you're looking for in some of those policy placeholders that we are trying to... Well, we will get it put together in a compiled format, at least for us to have an initial, very probably, brief conversation tomorrow. We don't have everything we need. We're still working through that. And again, we have some questions. But again, we think we have enough to continue to facilitate the discussion over this meeting tomorrow and into October. And we're working on the rolling calendar to make sure we continue to balance that for you, but to also keep this process going. So, that's some of our opening comments. And then Jeannie and I are really going to tag-team it. We've tried to put together an order of presentation to make it logical and make it flow for you as well. At some point, we'll pause because we have a series of questions that we do think we can start facilitating. Guidance, questions you need answered is what we're looking for. We're not making decisions tonight, but trying to just advance processes unless you're ready to tell us which way to go. And so, we're really, again, just trying to make this a back-and-forth for us to get all of the information that we need. So, Jeannie, in her extremely efficient way, has put together a package of materials and a little sub-agenda for what we're going to talk about. And this is one where we hope you will...
Come on, no, no. Come on, no, no. Winnie, no.
That's the dog, I think.
Winnie.
We'll ask questions as we go along, rather than hold them to the end. Okay? Does that sound good?
It sounds good. And how do we know if Mayor Protem Skrogan Johnson's participation?
Aaron is facilitating Mayor Protem Skrogan Johnson's participation. I did email all of this information to her shortly before the meeting, so she has that. Can we confirm Mayor Protem Skrogan Johnson got her email with materials? I think Aaron will be doing that by text. So, let's start, and we tried to make it bigger. That was another thing we learned. It may have needed to be a little bit bigger as we put together. So, let me tell you what this is. So, we've started with the Eisenhower presentation. And if that, if you recall, that's the one where you talked about it was critical and it needed to be done now.
No, no.
It was critical, but we needed to do it later. It was not critical, but we needed to do it now. And it was not critical, and we need to do it later. So, you might say, "If it's not critical, why do it now?" And there are sometimes reasons to do that. You have advantage of funds. It aligns with something. It needs to be done first. There are a variety of reasons why sometimes you would choose to do a project that somebody might call not critical now. Another important thing that I think we gleaned from the information is what you interpret as critical and non-critical, and making sure that we end up defining that the same way. And here's just an example of what I think I observed from the items. You may consider a fire station critical, but a park not critical to our services. Very important. But some of you may have chosen to define a park or some kind of community amenity differently. Nice to have, but do you have to have it to protect or serve the community? So, that's one of the things we'll want to really make sure that we somehow determine what we're talking about when we're saying that. But just based on what we know about you and inputs you've put in the past, we think that may be one of the questions we want to talk about in the future. But for right now, the information that you see in front of you is how each of you individually ranked this. And what we did is we just tallied up the number of council members that responded in each of those four areas in that way. So, this was where you just put X's. You'll see there's a couple that we just have to, got missed, or there may have been two X's that we'll verify individually with you. But it does seem pretty clear which projects are very highly supported, ones that are not supported, and then there's a few in the middle. And just, I'm sorry, Councilmember...
So, basically, trying to understand if it is six on the first one, everyone...
That is correct. That is correct. And there should be, it should add up to six all the way across. Again, sometimes we made some assumptions, and this is really where we think that there are probably some questions that we'll ultimately have to answer. I'll go to a really quick and easy one. If you go all the way down to the bottom, and it says "Train Depot," and somebody said "Critical and do it now," and somebody else said "Critical and do it later," we probably believe that that may have been interpreted as a train station associated with TOD.
A commuter rail station.
Correct. And so, that's the kind of thing we'll be coming back and just sort of re-verifying because in some places, we're able to observe how you may have responded is different than what we would have heard or expected from you. I'll stop at this point and say, "What we're trying to illustrate here is it's not important who said what. We're trying to show you where you're aligned and where you're not aligned on your feelings about some of these projects." So, that's why you don't see who said what, because that's not what our focus is. The next page right behind this one is just a different slice of this pie to show you the things you said "Do now" and the things you said "Do later." That's just another way to look at this because that relates to funding decisions and potential bond referendums, et cetera. But that's the same information that you would see. Does anybody have any questions on this one before we would proceed? And we can come back, but at this point, are there any specific questions before we try to advance the conversation?
I think that by tomorrow, I don't know, it could be helpful for us to have the fives and the sixes highlighted, maybe, if we're gonna be looking at this again.
And I think that is probably a conver... We'll tell you sort of what we thought could be planned tomorrow and see what council wants to do tomorrow.
So, just a suggestion. If you can sort it based on the ranking order, that would also be good because I'm literally trying to figure out where...
So, is that rank, and the other one may help more with this.
Yes.
Is that sort order by "Critical and do now"?
Anything. At least you have a clear, and especially the average ranking order. That one I'm looking because I'm finding two, then I'm trying to see where's the three. I haven't seen anything, so...
Okay. And you may have gone on to the next page already, which is what we're gonna talk about next. Hey, there.
Good evening, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
So, if I may, if I could just sort of catch Councilmember Schlink up. So, that first big spreadsheet, Councilmember Schlink, is the exercise we called the Eisenhower, where you said it was critical, not critical, "Do it now, do it later." And we just tallied up who said what.
Got it.
We've got a little bit of follow-up to do with some individual council members, just to clarify what we think we saw or if something got missed, but we're gonna do that outside of the meeting. The next page behind that is just a different version of that same spreadsheet where it shows where the "do it nows" were versus the "do it later's." Just another way to look at that information.
Great.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
All right. So, now, let's go to the rank order. And I think this is where Councilmember Garamella talks. So, it's the same projects we've just seen in the exact same order, and here's, this is where you ranked 1 to 32. So, what we've shared with you, different ways to interpret this information. So, the first, the first column is the scores that were provided divided by the number of council members. So, if it was 1, 5, 8, 10, and 12, we'd add those up and divide it by the number of votes there were. So, in this case, the lower the number, the higher you ranked it. The next column is sort of a similar version of that, is we added up all the scores. So, again, the lower the number, the higher each of you then individually ranked it rather than just an average. And why is that important? Because if you see the next raw ranking and the frequency is there are differences between how you rank these projects. And if you look at the last column there, the dispersion, that really shows the difference between what a high ranking and the lowest ranking that any individual council member gave. And that shows alignment or not. So, the lower that number is, the closer you bunched, your ratings were about the same, not exactly the same. And then, the further away, it means there's much more disparity in how you ranked those projects.
I like that. I appreciate that comment.
So... And then, the reason why we just gave you the raw ranking, because just another pretty standard way of looking at data is the mode, which is which number was provided the most often times. So, we've provided you that. So, if three of you, whatever, we just shared that with you. Again, it's not really identified, but you have those numbers here. And again, remembering, we're still following up to make sure that we've captured all the data correctly.
Apologies for the interruption. I was just gonna make a logistical comment. Mayor Protem Skrogan Johnson was having difficulty hearing, so she has left the call. She's going to participate watching the live feed. So, I will help facilitate any questions or comments she may have as best I can. Logistically, our microphones, if you can just keep them as close to an arm's length as possible, they pick up, we're told by our IT staff, that way, as that's the best range of frequency, I think. Apologies for the interruption.
Thank you.
So, Martha, what is the total point thing? That is more confusing.
So, if you look in that raw frequent, raw ranking frequency, it's 1, 1, 1, 3, and 4 all added up. And again, that's just to show the tightness and the difference between your ranked projects. So, if you, if you look at your fire station number two to Airport Boulevard, there's only really seven points difference, but already to the next one, you've got 12 points difference. It's just an order of magnitude kind of way to look at it. And we were trying to find the analysis and trends for you as much as possible, and this is just some ways to do it. We are open, again, to any other information that helps you talk through this. And there's all kinds of steps beyond this. Again, this is just the start of our little journey again this year, as we're in this major refresh era and try to advance what you want to have as your CIP. So, it's just a good check-in point. All right. Now, before we start asking questions, one, I want to make sure council members don't have any additional questions at this point, or that Jeannie wants to add something at this point.
Other than, I hope you understand that the multiple tools are very important to really filter out where your disparities are, so you can focus on those in your conversation. So, once you get to that paired comparison, even more is gonna kind of come out. It's gonna show, hopefully, some relationship to what you see as a whole, big picture, versus how you look at the categories individually, and then how you prioritize within the categories. And hopefully, we'll see some strong relationships, but be able to call out the things you need to talk about because there's such strong difference.
And we, and we mentioned, there was purposeful redundancy to make sure that you're telling us the same thing when the question's asked a little bit differently. Yes, sir.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was just itching, itching, yes.
See the nice flowers you got me over there?
Yeah, it's very nice.
So, we've got just a few questions before we go on to really what the next major component is, which is some bond policy discussion, that really what we're trying to do is clarify. So, I mentioned that we recognize we, we learn from these kinds of processes as well. So, one of the questions that we got from a number of you was about two of the projects. So, I want to clarify that there were two projects. One was called the Church Street Bypass, and one was called the Crabtree Crossing Creek South Loop, or Crabtree Crossing, yeah, Crabtree Hatcher Creek South Loop. So, those were, and a reminder, most of these were existing projects in your CIP. And one of the things that is a goal out of this process is many of those concepts are old, outdated. We may need to refresh them. And we want to put our effort on the ones that you really care about, not that everything if it's not gonna advance. So, that's one of the things that we want to have out as an outcome of this. But if you remember during the budget process, there were two projects that, as we worked through it, you didn't like the names associated with them because of what people may have thought they were. So, one was the Crabtree Crossing Sidewalk, and it was the sidewalk on the other side of the Crabtree Crossing from Morrisville Parkway to where it deads and, dead ends. And so, we changed that to Crabtree Hatcher Creek South Loop. But that's what that project is. It's just that sidewalk connection on the other side of Crabtree Crossing between Morrisville Parkway and where we connect down at our greenway.
And those are across from the apartments.
That is correct.
And there are sidewalks on the apartment side.
That is correct. And council has, if I, council has discussed, is that really needed or not?
Who owns the property on the other side going back to the power lines?
I don't know that answer, but that's a follow-up question that we can...
And could a fire station go in there?
I think that's the railroad right away. The railroad is right there.
So, I don't have at my, in my head, any information.
Yeah.
And I think that the, the fire station issue is a, I'll call it a land quality issue. It'll be the same issues associated with that road as what we're discussing with the Crabtree Crossing. But we'll get that information in follow-up. Then, the other one, the Church Street Bypass, is the, the road connection that runs behind Providence Place and where Mason Farm was to give those communities another access out. That's what that north loop is, that it would connect in that area of town for more connectivity for that.
Harris Mill Road extended north to Frontery Court at New Mason Farm.
Right. And you had some preliminary engineer costs, right? I think it was over $8 million for that also. And then?
I have preliminary estimates worth $11 million for Church Street North Bypass.
Got it.
Preliminary.
Yeah.
And so, Councilmember Schlink's raised a good point about this was purposeful, not a dollars exercise. Dollars do have to come into it, but it was what are your priorities for the town, and then you figure out how or if to pay for it. So, that was just the way it was focused. We're not saying you don't have to deal with that. This is just a layering of the project type of thing. That may have influenced some of your opinions, but that was not part of our exercise. One of the other things that we tried to illustrate, that there were projects and things that you've talked about that are not part of your current CIP. And this was a project list. And as I've mentioned, some of them are very old, that are, have been weighed down in a priority order anyways. Only a few have been added, and we tried to illustrate that there were some other things that you've talked about, not that you've weighed in or put into a CIP, but where did they fall in a relative ways. And then, we asked the question, "Were there other projects that you want to consider?" And we have that information that's gonna come forward, but there really weren't many. The only one that I can recall offhand was a Veterans Memorial was mentioned. Now, I say that as a project concept, recognizing that we still are working on some of those placeholders, which are big picture. So, again, an example would be if you wanted to do land acquisition, you may then have a list of properties in some order that we would want to somehow incorporate into that. Or if you were going to develop future parklight, so those placeholders, if you wanted to do affordable housing, it could be a certain amount of units. So, but those were placeholders right now, and they're not part of this list either, and as a result, are not prioritized. So, this is still very project-specific. The other thing that, and here's an illustrative example of that, is senior facility. So, many of you rank that high. The project concept as it exists is a standalone facility structure. And we've talked about ways to meet the needs of those programs versus a facility. So, that would be something that we're gonna come back and delve into. And those things can also become policy statements that we care and value about our senior programming, and we're going to find ways to meet those. It may not be a building, which is what this project concept was. So, ultimately, we'll be refreshing some project concepts as well.
So, let me, if I, you brought up Senior Activity Center, which is a good example. The previous one, you gave a presentation of the things. When I saw that and I saw this, I thought you were looking for dollars that could be, you know, depending on where the site is, it could be the structure. So, I was focusing that in mind when I ranked this, and I did not rank this as...
And we, and we recognized that.
I did not rank this as a new facility, but, you know, give a fast track...
Right.
...to let that go, and at least to have stability. That was my thought process when I was doing it.
And, and again, I think, you know, we pay close attention to what you say. So, when we, we're looking for those trends as much as trying to provide you with that information. So, we see that, we've recognized that. So, we know what the follow-up question is, is to make sure we've got the right council consensus on those types of things. So, that's still more our work to do. And that leads into just another one that's kind of related. So, we've talked about the fact that, you know, there's been a variety of things that have come up, many of them as an extension of some town center discussion. I'll sort of foreshadow. We think that our time tomorrow is that you've got your land use plan update, where you've got, you've had discussions about the town center area, you've looked at sub-area. That's not what's coming back to you tomorrow, but that land use plan, mission, vision, and values that you're gonna talk about tomorrow leads into the draft of that plan. And that's gonna, in many ways, guide your town, continue town center discussion. You've, you've shared a preference for a certain level of density and some amenities that are associated with that public amenity. So, we've mentioned a community center, a town green, parking, those types of things that are also individually on this list. As outcomes to that conversation, there's also been things mentioned about a town hall. And that's talked, that's led to the fact that we're going to have capacity needs for staff, and we've talked about police and fire, and all of those things could be interrelated into your town center discussion. Irrespective of your choice on whether you support, for example, a town hall or something, we will have to address where town staff will be. So, that, it may not be capital, and there's several of these types of things. It may not be a capital discussion, but we'll have to work on it from our operational perspective. So, we're seeing those things that help us bring you back what you need to talk about at your retreats, as a part of our budget discussion, and as a part of our CIP. Does that make sense? And it also goes back to that senior, because what I think we've also talked about is buildings can have multiple purposes versus being discrete buildings, but you can have multi-purposes in some of those buildings, as we talk about. So, those are the things that we saw in our first pass at this information. Okay. And we talked about that. I'm gonna pause a minute again, see if Jeannie wants to add anything that she thinks I forgot, and see if council has any questions about that right now.
Does anyone feel like it would be helpful to have this data massaged in any other way, presented in a different way? Steve?
Well, what helps me, the way I was doing it was, I mean, the data's been very helpful and that exercise is very helpful, but looking right now, with the way I look at things, I'm more of a visual learner, so it's just, still just a list of projects. So, the way I was looking at it was looking at our goals in the town, you know, like transportation, and then what is the ones that we can really execute and put that in the transportation bucket, and like, you know, public safety and livable neighborhoods. That way, we can, for me, the way I look at it is take a look at the list of all the different things we have, and maybe we're already doing that. But then, we, what I would like us to see, and that's obviously the reason we're doing this, is then to say, "Okay, what can we, as a council, come say, you know, let's say it's the Church Street Loop or bypass or, you know, something we do at, you know, those are the things that would be on a potential transportation bond, right? And then, for livable neighborhoods, it's like parks and sidewalks and things like that. That would, that's what's helpful to me, so that I know, just like you're running a race, you know, how do we move, how do we keep going down the field so that we know at the end of this that there's going to be a few things that we are then gonna put out to the public and figure out how we're gonna make it happen?
So, your paired comparisons are gonna provide a lot of that additional meat on the bones.
Okay.
Because, one, we've asked you, whether you realized it or not, we asked you to prioritize the individual types of categories of projects. So, does transportation mean more to you than parks and rec? Does bicycle ped mean more to you than... Does bicycle ped mean more to you than land acquisition? We've asked you that. We've also asked you-
The other document, right.
Do you prefer Fire Station Two or Crabtree?
Comparisons.
Yes, so we're-
Okay, that's, yeah.
We're putting all of that together for you. We're going to cross-reference it to your rankings and layer that information on.
Yeah, okay, that was the exercise. I'm just, I'm not saying anything that we probably don't already know, it's just that the way that I'm looking at it is, you know, and sometimes they can be related. Like, transportation could be related to public safety. If you have another road network that where people can access, get across town, might reduce response times and things like that, so. Thank you.
Yes, okay, yeah, and we think that, it's why we asked you to do that. We thought it would provide another way to digest the data. We just, we just did not get it all done today.
Okay.
So basically, you locked us up from all the directions?
Or tried.
She want, they wanted us to actually say our values are by the projects, not by what are your values?
What I meant to say is, they asked multiple ways to see that we are still getting to the same point. That was what I, yeah.
It helps us stop, not talk about one specific project versus what are you trying to accomplish? Big picture, long range is, is how we structured this exercise. Because it, it's easy to get caught up in the projects and the costs and the time it takes to do them versus what do you really want to accomplish for the town? So, so that is what we've tried to do here.
Big picture approach.
Yeah.
In the end, you always have to say of the cost, the timing, when you get down to that level of detail when it comes to decision-making, and when you decide to put in action and construct something. I mean, you have, you have decision points all along the way. Staying up here with your vision helps us create these packages and put them out there for you to consider and engage the community with them.
And this list may be dramatically different. Again, remembering that you committed to a policy two years ago for a major refresh in this year. So that's really what we're doing. We're, you know, we're, we're at the start of that. We're, one, because we want to talk about bond, but we're way ahead of the budget process than when we started in this, this in the past. And I, I think that's something we've heard from council. It's big, you need more time to talk about it as, as we move it along. And it's difficult to do all in one fell swoop. So, so I think, I'll speak for myself, this is, this is helpful to us, helping you back and, and knowing what questions to ask to help facilitate on your behalf as well. So we really do appreciate that, that you took the, the time to do it. We, we knew it was big, and, and, and we hope we were helpful to you as you did it.
It was hard.
Heard that?
It was very hard.
I've heard that from more than one of you.
So after you've synthesized and it comes back, to maybe help align it with the strategic plan, the six goals? They sort of almost necessarily be bucketed that way, but associated?
Well, you've got categories outlined in your CIP. And, and yes, we're, we're trying to align everything with, with the strategic plan.
Some of them naturally do, some of them a little fuzzy, they might go over a couple of different sides.
Well, and many of our, many of our projects achieve multiple goals. I mean, that is the rea, and that's good. That's good when you're hitting it in more than one place. And I, I hear what you're saying, maybe that's not where the focus needs to be as much now, is making sure that that's very clear. And as we head into citizen input, and Jeannie's going to handle most of the rest of this meeting as she goes through your bond policy input, that's very important to the citizens, to our messaging, to our communications, to all of our linkages. So very important, but do you need it now to have this discussion is what I would ask?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
As part of the synthesis when the paired's come back.
Yeah, because one of the things we'll ask you is, is, you know, when you, if you remember back to our CIP that's in the budget, you've got that future funding category that has sixty-five or seventy million or something in it. Well, if we're really not going to ever do a project, we don't need to keep it in that bucket just to make it look like a big number. So tough choices. If we're never going to do a train depot, well then, let's just take it off the list. Because it's just something that we talk about and talk about and talk about. If we don't need to talk about it, let's take it off the list. And there's some of those that you may choose to do. Also recognizing what our capacity is for now and well into the future to, to do those projects, and that updating them doesn't help you if they're just never going to be done. So that's, that's not good staff time spent either. One more thing before I turn it over to Jeannie is NC fifty-four. So it is high, not surprised. And, and, and that's just another in-depth item, you know, that we'll have to talk about as, and, and I'm one of the ones that always says every decision you make influences another decision, and that's financial. But we'll have to grapple with where and how NC fifty-four fits into our budget and the reality, or our policy, and the realistic expectations of what it would take to move that needle with NCDOT, even in partnership with Town Carey. And, and it, it's not twenty million, it's seventy or eighty million. So, and we are, you know, we are continuing to work with both, well, Campo, NCDOT, and with the Town of Carey to pull together information for you to have a robust discussion on that. But that may be another place where there's a policy statement that's supplemental to our CIP and what we're trying to accomplish. So that, that's just a sort of a, what do you call it? Just a dropping of a breadcrumb about what a, a big conversation might need to be, is how do we do that if it's not going to fit into our budget of any kind?
I, I think that's, I think that's an important conversation to have, because that project is so important, and I, I, I think it's important to everybody in this room, yet it sucks the air out of the room.
Yeah, yeah, it's so much, I know.
Even if we focused all our energies on that, we still don't have enough money to make it happen, so.
And at the expense of other things that we could do.
At the expense of a lot of other things that this community wants. So we have to address it, but it, it needs to be addressed in a unique way, I, I think. Because I, I think when we did that, there was, when the results came back from the fifty-four and more study, that whole project was like two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. I mean, that's for, you know, the piece that's being done now too, it was the whole way down. So it's just not possible for us to do that on our own. So I, I appreciate that we do need to do something with that, recognizing that it is so critical, but that it, it's a unique animal.
I, I think we recognize that it's important for our community to know council's position on it and how we're trying to approach making progress on it. And, and, and that brings in a lot of our resources, including Communications Department. And again, it could be a policy statement that, that council may, may want to make outside of a CIP budget process. But, but this, these are things that we want to know how to help you best. So that, I just had to mention that one before we moved on.
Yeah, I think when I saw fifty-four, I am, actually, then, it was not surprising, because Airport Boulevard and fifty-four, I was kind of looking as together, because that's what, the whole reason we went for Airport Boulevard was as part of the mitigation of fifty-four. So for, for me, it is our commitment to show that we want to do Airport Boulevard, which indirectly helps fifty-four in chunks and some pieces. So that was my thinking when-
And that's that connectivity conversation to offload some off of where the major road is. Yes, I, I, I think those, those things are linked. And as we also know, several other critical projects are already on hold at NCDOT. So we have to also talk about the realities of what that would mean. Okay, all right. So we're going to transition to the real first policy topic. Again, it's a continuation of, of bonds that we've talked about for a year, heading into aligning everything you say with how we want to proceed.
Okay. So I'm going to be using, basically speaking from this worksheet. That's really a synthesis of the information that you provided. Also gave you a copy of the bonds frequently asked questions, just as a refresher. There's some, some good information in there, you just might want to look at that at some point in time, just as a reference. So I've got it up here on the screen. I'm going to go question by question and point out the ones that you have agreement on. And then, of course, we're going to try to spend our time on the ones that you, there's not a consensus in how you want to proceed. And I might have some questions for you or clarification as we get to those where there's some disconnection. Is that good? Okay. So question one really dealt with what's your level of support for increasing taxes to support each of the following? So we talked about or gave you three, three classes. It was debt funding, capital project cost, and operational cost. So debt funding is really that you're going to use your tax rate to pay for that annual debt payment that comes either with bond referendum or with any type of financing instrument. In this case, we're specifically talking about bonds, so that's what I'm referring to. Capital cost, capital project cost could mean that you're going to use the tax rate to really accumulate dollars to pay for a project at some point in the future as a whole. You're not financing it, that's what that means to me. And then, of course, my-
Can I?
Yes.
Does that include pay-as-you-go projects?
It could, it pay-as-you-go, perfect description of what that is.
So there are several items that could be pay-as-you-go projects. So there are smaller projects that you would allocate a, I'll call it a bucket of money to. Sidewalks is an example.
Sidewalks is perfect.
Greenways could be an example, where you've got, you could have a whole bunch of little things that it's, it's almost a revolving account. So, so that's what the difference between those two items is. We had a couple of questions about that, that's why we wanted to clarify that.
And of course, operational costs. So that's, we all know that once you add facilities, you're likely adding equipment, staff. You're definitely adding an asset that you're going to have to maintain in the future. So is it that you want to extend or have that tax rate support any future operational costs associated with this new asset that you're potentially putting in place with the town? Or, and some of your comments were that you expect the growth in, growth in your existing operations, your growth in revenues to continue to rise and pay for that. So you have to think really hard about that. The economic conditions might play into whether that fits or works or does not work. So generally, I provided you with really your additional comments that you had once you selected either from strongly, a strong yes, all the way through to strong opposition for each of the three categories that I identified. And then I provided you with really what staff is seeing in an analysis, is that there's really more support clearly for a tax increase for supporting capital project cost, and then, of course, debt funding. The use of the tax increase to support future operational costs is really unclear in your responses. So when I look at someone who puts neutral, neutral is not an answer that says yes or no. Neutral means it's probably, it depends, it's a case-by-case situation, that's sort of how I interpret that. But it's not a clear response enough for me to swing it one way or the other. So that's how I read into that. So that is something that we could pause and talk more about if there are any questions that you might have about these categories and how you responded. That is your first one that's not clear, and it's just about the operational cost.
And let me try to give you some more thoughts for that about how we put together our annual operating budget, because it relates to this. So we, we forecast all our revenues, and as you recollect, we, we work from that base budget approach. So it's existing stuff that we have to do to keep the doors open, plus the, what I call the nominal cost increases that occur. You know, rates go up, you know, you, you pay your people, insurance goes up, just things cost a little bit more, just that inflation factor. And that includes our debt, so we take into account debt, and so that's what our expenses are. And that difference is what we program as your capacity. So when we put together that list of all the stuff that we're asking you to consider that's new to the budget, we tell you what's going to increase that base budget, so additional landscaping costs, because we have more properties to take care of, those types of things. And then everything else is available for those one-time or non-recurring costs. So that's where stuff is getting done that might be new or different than what we already have programmed. So new facilities, et cetera, could incur additional operating costs, which would have to get added in. And that's just going to reduce the capacity within our current existing tax structure with what can be programmed for other one-time or new things. That's just the way the equation works at a constant state of a tax increase. That, that's just how we put it together. So you can, you could build a fire station, you could add all the operating costs, likely handle it within an existing budget, but you have less to do other one-time things. That's how we balance it out as we propose a balanced budget to you.
So it basically shifts one-time items to routine?
And I'm not making a value statement, I'm just trying to explain how it all gets put together to come up with that balanced budget with no recommended tax increase. Okay?
Are there any questions?
So, so when I went about this, and I don't know if this helps, so when I went about this, I thought about that, because you're right. If we're going to add on additional facilities, we need to staff them, we need to maintain them. So I guess when I was, when I was rating these three categories, debt finding, financing, and capital project costs were, I did support those, could be bond projects, or they, somehow they could be financed through bond money. Because bond money is, is the best and the cheapest money we can use. So I was fine with that, but those are also typically one-time costs too. So I guess in my mind, I was thinking operational costs are going to be reoccurring costs and probably should not be part of any kind of financing structure, because they're reoccurring costs. So that's how, so I think I was a neutral, actually. Yeah, when I did the operational costs, because I, because I was a, it depends.
And one of the things that we recognize, we really need to do well as a part of this conversation, is when we talk about the capital stuff, tell you both sides of the coin. It's not just what it costs you upfront, and, and another thing that we've emphasized internally is not just the cost of building a fire station, but the environmental and the appraisal and the construction and contract administration. There's project costs that are beyond just a construction contract. And, and so that's a bigger number, but it, it's knowing what those numbers are to have a really realistic picture of what a project costs us. Then it is what are the annual operating costs, so that you're seeing that as a part of the capital decisions.
So, and, but I think those, and this is just me, I, I think those kind of conversations and how we cover those kind of costs need to be in a separate kind of bucket and category and discussed differently. You know, for me, I would prefer, if, if we get to the point where, let's say we build the nature park and, you know, we just cannot fund the operations of that nature park, you know, and that, that requires some other str, you know, line of funding or requires a tax increase- or requires a tax increase, well, that's a different conversation. I just think for me, bond funding should be for the one-time costs, not ongoing operational costs. That's just kind of as simple as I can make it.
And again, the nuances of the way we asked the question, we didn't ask you about raising taxes for bond or, we asked you about raising taxes to support these types of costs. So, it's not just specifically related to bonds. Our goal is just to make sure you have as much good information at the time of your decision rather than after you've made a decision. That's just our goal with having some realistic conversation about what the ongoing operating costs are. And we illustrated that for a fire station last year because you were talking about fires. It's a big number. It's not a big number for everything, but it is a big number for some things. You know, a park that you don't have regular staff or some heavy intensive activity, the annual operating increases wouldn't be as significant.
So, I don't mean to dominate. Just make one more comment. I think that those conversations are important. I think those conversations need to be had early and often, very early, and they need to be with the public too so the public understands what that means. You know, if you, if, you know, building this, a new fire station requires additional hiring of staff to man that fire station and that in turn requires some kind of associated tax increase, well, I think that's a, that's a hard conversation to have, but one that needs to be, happen early and involve the community as well to see if that's what they're willing to fund.
We'll get to that part.
Yes.
Councilmember Sling, please.
Yes. I think, and I'll need this tonight, but I, going forward, I think it's good for me and I think a lot in the public too to go back and I think I asked for it for the, and every year I ask for it for the budget, but go back for the last five years and look at this, these base costs and just show me out, show us, show the public how it's increased or whatever it's done over five years. And I think we could use that and then compare that to the revenues and operational and base, I'm sorry, for the expenses. Operational, basic spends and operational and how they've increased. It may be a percent. And then, I think capital investments would be a good idea too because we spend a lot and I think people miss that site.
And I'd like to add, if I may, I think the context of why it's increased in the fire department is just a good example. You don't add one, you add three. So, when it jumps big is what context we can provide. That we added two or three staff that year also helps the public understand.
Right. Again, because I'm a big proponent, as we've heard earlier, that I think the public needs to understand. And when we go to a bond referendum, I think that's the easiest way to validate what we're thinking versus in the public's mind. Are they willing, because it's going to be a tax increase 99% of the time, I believe, of bond revenue. It's going to cause that to happen. So, I just think it, that's the transparency I like to see.
I just, I recall when John Woodson was discussing, I think, I don't know if it was storm order or something about, I think it was a storm order that you don't want to add an expense without adding, compensating revenue source. So, when he talked about increasing a new fire station, having more operations, there may be a need to increase a property tax rate to meet the needs and not keep on using up our growth capacity. So, we've kept the property tax where it is for a very long time. That's the discussion to have that if there are all these needs, if we share what we're doing and why we're doing it and show people why, property taxes may change. That's part of it. And that's why I was a strong yes for debt funding, capital project costs. So, I think it might be important because we have a lot of needs. So, any other thoughts from over here?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I think any bond or investments that we put to the citizens should be tied for things that are, you know, capital projects, not, you know, not reoccurring. And reoccurring could be either looking at tax increases or how we look at our budget. So, and sometimes what we've seen is there's a lot of work that goes into putting these bonds in terms of just the staff time and the resources. It takes a lot of years to get these things done and executed. So, that's something that we have to factor in as well.
I hear us kind of co-mingling the idea of a bond referendum being a yes or a no. And I liked how Wake County put it recently that we are going to do these projects and general obligation bonds are the least expensive way to do them. But we're going forward with them. So, it's important for us as a council to make clear, if this does not pass, we're still going to do it? Or are we actually asking the citizens, do you want us to do this or not? I think that's going to be an important conversation to us to have to determine what we're actually asking. Because I think we've been tasked with deciding what we're going to do and then doing it. If the citizens want us to ask them, we need to tell them that we're actually asking them, not just asking them, is this, do you want to do it in the least expensive way possible?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. But I'd add on, we're going to do it that much sooner and quicker.
True.
With a bond referendum and with your agreement to raise taxes to make these proj, move these projects forward, if that's the case. So, it should, they happen much quicker. Sure, they'll happen over time, but it'll take a long time. Because we don't have-
That's a good point.
-money to do it all.
I think that's something that certainly, when we talk about public engagement, when you engage them on the front end, not, not when they go to the polls. There's two different types of ask here. When you, when you engage the citizenry through public engagement, then that could be the framework of that messaging there. I think you remember, be careful of the ask at, that you're asking the voters is specifically about the debt funding or not. It's not about the projects at the polls. So, on the, earlier on is definitely a better fit and through those public engagement opportunities where I think that message certainly fits best. Any questions over here? I think I'm going to move us forward.
Larry?
No, I think, I think we did. I think we had an important conversation about operational cost. It's something you have to consider. And it's not that we're advocating one way or another. It's just we want to make sure that you're aware, there's cause and effects to building a building. And it could impact your future operational costs. It could impact how you have the ability to use what we call discretionary monies that we put in front of you for other initiatives or one-time initiatives. Could shift the bar from what are one-time costs to more of routine costs that we have to fund year over year through the existing tax base. So, you just have to keep those things in perspective when you talk about building buildings, whether you're going out for a bond or not, using some other source, you're raising revenue for it, what else that revenue could potentially be, need to be used for. Just think about those things.
I'm thinking about residents, people that we're trying to educate. If we can maybe use the terms one-time and recurring, I think that makes it really clear because routine is maybe routine, but doesn't necessarily imply recurring to some people. You were going to say, Councilmember Garmar?
Yeah. Genie, also, can you give us a projection of how much, you know, like, lower, like, taxes we will be collecting over the next four years? Like, is there a projection that you have?
So, I do long-range projections over a five-year period with every budget process and reassess those every year based on new information from our tax assessor. You're coming up, this is a reval year. You're coming up on a budget year. That, that's going to be even more important to have an understanding in how it impacts the future projections and capacity and growth in that revenue source.
Because that's-
What was the census?
You know, if it is going up and, yeah, you're right, census. So, at least we know how much of that operation cost that we can absorb if at all none are, you know, based on the projections. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, and some of that is timing this year from, there are two big things ahead of us. So, I'm previewing State of Morrisville tomorrow. My presentation is census and the revalue process. Both of them are resets of the forecasting really that Genie does. And we're not going to have that for many more months.
No, that's, that's true. What was the 2015 census population? It was 24,000 or?
I think we were 23,691.
200, 200.
Yeah, something like that.
So, that's, from there, at least you know where we land. So, okay, good.
You've got to figure that other municipalities who didn't do a special census, they're going to get a big jump.
It doesn't matter if they get it or like, you know, it's, we just, it doesn't matter what for us, right?
Yeah, we're going to do our best.
Can I make one more comment or, and tell me if my, because I, as I was answering this question, I thought about this. If we, you know, I've been saying we need to have some kind of bond strategy and have some cycles that we're planning for bonds. And in my mind, I'm thinking that the pay-as-you-go and the debt financing projects, I'd like to see them wrapped into bonds too. I'd like to see, I'd like to see them not, not, not be debt financed all the, you know, and I can't think of one project right now. If we planned ahead and wrapped them into some bond strategy, then wouldn't that give us, that would build that capacity because you would not be pay-as-you-go or dom, or debt financing.
Yeah, I guess you're shifting dollars to in a different strategy.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
I think that, that was where I was heading when I was answering this question. That was my thought process was, let's, yeah, that's a good way to put it, Genie. Let's shift all this and then that, then that opens up your capacity to do your operational costs because now we're not doing debt financing all the time. And we're not doing pay-as-you-go. And I, like I said, I can't think of one project.
Went to the radios, they were debt financing.
Yeah. But, but when you have no, when you have no plan for your next bond referendum and you have no strategy, you have no choice but to do pay-as-you-go and debt financing because you, we have no idea when the next bond will be and how to wrap that into a bond, those one-time costs. I'd like to see us doing that.
So, just food for thought on that. There are some limitations with bonds. We have to go through LGC to get these packages approved. And you can't just bundle things that aren't alike. So, that's one of the items that's in your FAQ that I, that I allude to. They've got to make sense. They've got to fit together. But that's certainly something that we are doing and the reason why these things become so important and why there are extra items on here that aren't just from your CIP because we've heard you talk about some of those things. And it may be that we, if they're important to you, we might be able to pull and bundle them together into a bond package and be able to, to do that.
Sidewalks would be a great example.
Yeah.
Land acquisition as part of parks that you determine-
Yeah, instead of buying property. Yep, yep, for debt financing.
So, I'm going to move us on if there's any other, other questions or statements. That was a good one. So, the next question was, what is your perspective on community engagement in the selection of projects for a future bond referendum? This is an important one. So, in this, there were three folks that selected before prioritization decisions are made, two during prioritization process, and of course, one for after prioritization decisions are made. In your comments, I'll just highlight a few buzzwords, previous bond model. So, this is really a statement towards the 2012 bond and how we went about engagement there. There's a couple of phrases in here, residents elect us to decide which, which of the projects are important to put in front of them so that we can advocate for their interest. That was another statement. Community input's critical to prioritization. Citizen input and buy-in needs to happen early. So, this is some things that I hear from you guys as I look at the scores. Staff's analysis, I will say, there's not a clear agreement. But with that said, there's a general indication that council supports a variation of citizen input on the front end and during the process, which I think is something that I see often with, with bond referendums. They tend to be more on that, that front to the middle part of the process. And in your timeline, I know I've, I've put a bond cycle timeline in front of you before and we actually have called out or called out a time period in which we can do some things like that. But I think that is something very important for council to talk about. What does it look like to you? If we did something before you prioritized or made final decisions or during the process, what, what does that look like to you? So, that really leads to that next question. Were there any questions on this one?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking to hear what the council feels is the difference between one and two, before prioritization decisions are made and during prioritization process. Because I was thinking about 2012 and seems like we, the council at the time, I wasn't on the council, sort of put forth, I don't know how many, maybe eight. So, the prioritization process was kind of already done and then asked the residents which ones they thought should go forward. So, that's why I thought that was during prioritization process. But someone might say that that's actually before prioritization decisions are made. So, we might be thinking the same thing, but I'm not sure how you guys are thinking.
I agree. I think we need to clarify what we all, how we all answered this.
Okay, let's talk about that.
I have a feeling we all answered this.
I was, yeah, I-
A different definition.
So, how do we move forward on that? What do you think?
So, so, I'll ask you this question. Is this the prioritization process you're referring to when you asked the question, what we're doing right now?
No, I don't think so.
No, I wouldn't.
So, so I'm talking out loud because I don't know what's in any of your heads either. So, before the prioritization process to me would have been, you've got 32 projects. Which ones are the citizens interested in? And that's lots of money. And then, council would have to do some work to refine and define what might be offered in a bond, and that's what we would promote. During the prioritization process is, council has been talking about and has a CIP. You know what the identified needs are that you, and this is my understanding, I believe, of how the 2012 process worked. Council put forward a select number of projects that then the, the citizens provided input and feedback into. Very important reminder of something that Genie's already said. We're not going to voters to say, do you want Crabtree Nature Creek Park? You're going to ask for bond referendum money to support projects like Crabtree Nature Park so that you have the flexibility to advance projects as you're able to. A number of things can happen. We've got the example, and I know Councilmember Sling probably doesn't like to talk about this one anymore, but the MCP and MAFC discussion because MAFC became much more than orig- and that's, sometimes those things happen. So, that's why you, you at least want the flexibility while still remembering what you indicated to the voters that they were going to potentially approve. So, that's why that communication strategy becomes so important. But, and I heard Genie mention that we're elected to represent the voters and know what they need. And, and our reality is, we do know. We, we as staff, we as council, we as the citizens, I hope, know we do sometimes have needs. They're big needs. Those are the obvious projects that need to come forward first. And as we further advance into bond referendums, I'm just going to say to you, keep, keep grounded in the reality of how much time we want to spend selecting projects when we know what our needs are and what we're already working towards. And that's been part of our CIP discussion. So, to Councilmember Colley's point, Public Works Facility. We're going to need it whether the voters approve it or not. So, that's the discussion of, do we- So that's the discussion of, do we ask for that or know we have to fund it? But it may influence what you want to ask for or how much you want to ask for. Everything is interrelated.
And I will not shy. I was the, a guy who put one after prioritization decision. It was, was purely because of this thought process because, and you have said time and again, like Public Works is not a sexy thing on the bone. And, and when we look at overall holistically, the whole picture, then it is important for us to pick all rounded bond package that we put it to the people. Then, you know, tell them, okay, how do you want? And knowing very specifically that our surveys has like less than 100 or 200. And if we determine that as overall trend of how to go, then we are pretty much, I think, hitting ourselves on the foot there. Because we, as a staff and the council, do know the ground realities here. And just giving a person to say, okay, pick your top 10 and then going by that list because he doesn't know all the information and all the hours and hours that we sit through. So that was the reason when I said, obviously, you put it there and then caught the interest.
And all of these decisions influence the communication strategy and approach. We will need, let's, let's cut to the chase. You staff will not be able to convey to all the voters all of the information that is needed about these projects. We will need to develop community advocates, people that are help conveying that message as a part of the communication strategy. We saw it with the Wake County Public School, Wake Tech. You don't rely on just your resources, so you have to carefully craft the message.
I think how was the Wake County did? I think they did the same, right? Like they picked the projects and then had, you know, groups help advocate. I think that's what I heard, what the last bond, how they did it.
Yes, and, and again, I'm just talking quick off the hand. The, the Wake County Public School system is representing a huge amount of area. They probably would have much, much more trouble getting support if it was a specific school here, here versus an overall Wake County. Is, we're talking about Morrisville.
Yeah, I guess, that's true.
So I guess it would help to know what people think before prioritization decisions are made would look like. Does anyone want to weigh in on that? Because I was one of the people who said during prioritization process because I was kind of thinking about 2012.
I would just say that I thought the process went well last time. So I, you don't have to answer the question now, but how do you view that what we did last time to answer to? I'd be interested.
You're talking about 2012?
Yeah. So, I mean, but I thought, again, it's a combination of both, but whatever, you don't have to answer now. But I'd just say, to me, that was a good blueprint, it was successful. I think we, we were very flexible, it happened very quick. We did it in, after the retreat and we had a bond referendum that November.
So I can respond to that.
Yeah.
That would be a typical type of process where it's during. What you did is you called the long list of projects down because you felt that was your role as elected officials. And you created a communications plan through use of surveys online. You had online tools and then you had your work session, your forum.
But I think it gets back for some of my colleagues. So when you say during it, then in essence, you're closing it out. You're not really accepting, so the public comes in and says, gee, I wish you'd do this. And then we, you react to that. We already had a CIP list and we vetted that. Because I remember we had an issue about town center versus not town center. And I'd say, just to my colleagues, think about it, but look at your top 10. You don't have any real town center functions. But if we go back and look, and that's why I've asked for the capital improvements, how much we've spent. That's the flexibility I'm looking for. So I know it's roundabout way, but I think it worked last time. So I'm trying to do that because I really think we need to have a bond referendum next year. That's all. And I, and I know it's, I don't want to lengthen out the process, but I want to start it sooner than later. And I think what we did was we war-gamed how much tax increase we thought the public and we could uphold. And we've already had some of that discussion, thanks to your budget work. So, and I, and I look forward to doing that. I'm not trying to have that conversation tonight, but if you go back and look at the budget, I think it's, a lot of this is already programmed in there, at least some of the rate increases. That's how I view it. So I think we're right in the right direction. I'm just trying to help my colleagues. I think you answered it by saying it was during the process, but we weren't accepting like new projects. And we were basing it upon there and then we kind of vetted it. And that's why we didn't do things to the downtown. We concentrated on roads, in my opinion, and then a pot of money for parks and.
So I guess it might be helpful to move us forward that if you treat what we did in 2012 as during and you give us an alternative of what it would look like to do something before. What would that look like? Don't do a whole thing, just if you can give us an idea of what that would look like, then we can compare the two and sort of fall down on one or the other.
Well, so I'll tell you, I think I rated this before. But, but I also am, and that's just how I interpreted the question and everything. But I also am happy with the way we did it in 2012.
And we'll have, we'll have to deal with some realities. Because, you know, one of the things we're talking about is some long-range policy developments. You also have a decision in front of you. If you wanted a robust before process, we're probably not talking about a 2020 bond referendum because of the time and effort something like that would take. And we do know what's coming through some of our pipeline. And it's just some realities of, some of it's short-term, some of it's long-term in designing a before process. There, there are ways that, that that could become something. You've got a PMAC committee that, that you charge that committee with something CIP. You have an existing committee that, that could design a more robust or ongoing process. But ultimately, we'll have to also recognize there is a limited amount of time if council wants to proceed with a 2020 bond referendum. Just, and, and another point that I think will really, as we get to that policy and, and understanding how each of you looked at town center stuff in relation to the CIP. Because I think some of you are seeing it as separate buckets and some of it perhaps is not because the, the town center has that public-private partnership component to it. So that's part of what we're trying to pull together for you as well.
I think it's a fair statement to be cautious that engagement can slow your process down. That's one of the things in the frequently asked questions. The other thing, just off the cuff example of what's in a before process. In your CIP policy, you actually do a survey every two years. Survey can be viewed as a part of that before process where you put things out to the community. And it's category-based in, in this, in our policy and not project-specific. Category-based meaning transportation, parks and rec, those sorts of things. So that's a form of a before, if I were to put that together for you. So I can put some context to those two things and, and actually take you to question number three, which is what types of community engagement do you envision? This was really great to hear in your words, some of those ideas and thoughts. And I can align some of those to really what works best and, and put some context to both of those categories if that helps you with your next conversation. The 2012 model was mentioned twice. Open houses is definitely a, a type, a form in which we can use. Online input was mentioned several times, different types of strategies there that can involve surveys. Or what's called an inbox was referenced. I consider that an online tool. But some of those things I can put together and, and create some context of what that could look like for you, if that helps.
Okay, so can I say something?
Yes.
So the input box, that was my comment. That, that's not an online thing.
Oh, that's not an online thing?
No, no, no.
I thought that was the online thing.
I, I was referring to what Planning did. They, it was an actual box and it was like, you, you took it to your community and you.
The Land use plan. The Land use plan.
You, you know, you presented it and you got input from, yes, it was what we did with the Land Use Plan update. So no, that's not online. I, I did have online in there, too. But I, I'm, my comments were back to the, find the champions in the neighborhood and have them help us share the information.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that because I totally took that as an online portal. So, so that information was very helpful and number three.
It's kind of like taking the open house to their.
That's correct. To meet people where they are, yeah.
So there were definitely champions, neighborhoods, small groups, take it to the people as part of that.
And, and use our advisory committees. I don't think we have, you know, these folks need to help us.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, I think we think our citizens may know what our needs are. And unless you need that service, you may not be aware. So some of it is just information about what's been identified, just, just sharing that information without even asking for, what do you think? But did you know kind of stuff?
So any other comments on just engagement with the public in general? And I'll move you to the next one.
It's an educational effort that needs to happen early on.
So the next one's easy enough. You were unanimous. And number four, should bond referendums include cost of NC DOT betterments and/or use of funds for state-owned roads? So that's a clear connection for all of you.
This would be one that we might want to revisit, whether this should be just sort of, it, it's either going to come in that NC 54 or be a placeholder. Because as you may recall from what Ben has mentioned, there are significant costs for those betterments coming in our next five-year forecast window. That if you wouldn't include it in this discussion, it's coming out of that one-time money or some of the reserves that we've set aside. So those are big numbers.
So let's put a pin in that, that it might be really important to include some kind of transportation, if only to absorb that need without using up all of our growth capacity.
I would agree.
Say it again, I'm not sure I understood what.
Just the idea that, let's not go down the road and feel that we don't have a transportation-type bond need. We do. We've just identified it and it might not be a big one that we can point to like a grade separation or something. But it's important enough that it's going to use up all of our capacity for these betterments if we don't have it included somewhere possibly.
Point taken. A reality of this one is when NC DOT controls the timeline and we have bond spending timelines associated, that's a balancing act that we just have to be very cautious of. It may structure how we would propose something like that.
So, but to your point before, if you structured the question, because I agree, there, there is definitely going to be a transportation bond question. You know, I'm assuming there's going to be a couple of buckets. Transportation could be one of them. But if you word it correctly, in those instances, then the money goes towards sidewalk projects and greenway projects and other road connection projects, you know, airport, whatever.
And we did a good job, I think, doing that.
I would agree.
Do you have a question?
I would say like three buckets mainly like. Transportation, infrastructure and parks. Because infrastructure, you put the fire station and any facility that's all in.
Any more thoughts on that before we go to number five? So number five was, do you support establishing a frequency for future bond cycles? So, so this one, you have your additional comments there. One person answered actually for two and four, I, I denoted to four years. There's some general interest that leans towards the four years. But of course, this is something that is up to you to decide which direction you want to go in. There were several comments about execution of projects, the things that we already have in place and the timing of that. There were comments about if you did it on a cycle and you raised the tax rate every time you had a bond cycle and is that appropriate? You could by the end of a certain period of time have a larger tax rate. So, so what that says to me is, you need to analyze the capacity and, on each of those bond cycles and what you can do with them, depending on what the, the period of the frequency of that could be. And then, of course, there was a request for need more information and we'll get with that person and figure out what that meant. Are there any thoughts on this one? Any questions to how you answered the question, the approach and what you took?
I, I put six years, I remember, because the reason was completion of like.
Was that the reason why?
Yeah, like issuance and the completion. And before we get, it takes, even now, to get into a bond, it's taking two years. So that was the reason, my rationale.
Well, and, and you're right. I mean, we, we know we've struggled with achieving what we want to spend within windows. So we, it's why you advanced some funds to get some projects more shovel-ready. It also helps us be better at gauging what true costs of a project are, which, which, which we haven't done well. And that includes the 2012 bond referendum. Those were guesses because of the timing of the process. So that matters into what we're doing and what we can accomplish. Beyond what you suggest, we're also layering in all of our debt models and the things that LGC and our repayments of funds. So all of those things are happening as well.
I wanted to ask, what was the rationale behind four years? Because for me, it was like two years only takes in the preparation. So you're almost like into that.
So there are many, there are many municipalities that, that use their debt capacity to its maximum to get things done. So it's just a constant cycle. So things don't get done, they're in different stages in a pipeline. So some will roll off, some will be in the middle. So, so that there's some constant movement of projects being done. And it balances a whole bunch of stuff. We're, we're at a much smaller level. The choices we make are also influenced by a number of things. We don't have elections every two years. Off-cycle creates election costs, that we have to fund election costs and all of those communication strategies. There's costs outside of just the bond to, to exploring bonds. We have our attorney, you know, quarter of a million dollars for bond counsel for every time we issue a bond.
Wow, that's a good business.
They earn every penny.
You know, the credit rating processes take a huge amount of workload and effort. As, as Jeannie mentioned, we can't do anything without LGC input and approval, so. But there are, there are places that have teams of people that are working that, on that all the time as well.
I would agree that you have to do it. I think that's the problem. If you, we don't have money in the pipeline, you can't start projects. And that's why, again, I'll harp on it, but we need to have a bond next year so we can start getting stuff in the pipeline and start doing it. Because as you can see, it takes years to get this going. And we use that extra money, as she indicated, to start getting that going. Or at least the bond increase, at least the two cents. That we're going to get back at the end. Or we told ourselves we would.
We lied to ourselves.
And any other comments on that particular question? So let's go to question six. Question six has to do with the support of bond referendums being held in a town in Morrisville, election year, election cycle or off-cycle? So the three choices here were election year, off-cycle, or it depends. So here clearly, there's not an agreement. And I think it depends needs to be further defined, what that means to each of you so that you understand each other. There were comments that were important to hear that we need to keep options open. It depends when we're ready. Those are things that we, we've talked about, capacity, to be able to handle that and good planning and overlaps of what we're hearing in our planning. So any comments or questions on this and how you replied?
My two views, I think I said off-cycle because I think off-cycle is less of an election year issue and then we get lower turnout. So, I mean, if it's off-cycle, we're going to get a state or federal election, which more people typically turn out. So I think you gauge it better from the public. And then if you do it off-cycle, it's not an election year issue. Politics don't, can't come into it.
So it's not a political.
Did we say the same thing?
We often think alike.
Yes, we do often think alike. I would agree with you.
So which one is a better option? You know, like having like municipal election time is where you don't have hardly like 10% is the max that you get compared to 70% on a general election is not for
Where?
Marshall is, you know.
I don't know that we can, I don't know that either Jeannie or I would say better. There are trade-offs in the choices that you have to make. You know, as we've mentioned to you, the state legislature did put some guidelines in place that is really designed to, I think, avoid voters not being aware or not having a reason to go to the polls, so outside of your municipal elections. There was a reason why they did that. But if there are elections where people would be going to the polls to vote for other offices, then it's still in play. It will probably influence how many people vote for those types of things. If you have, you know, it's all about voter, voter patterns of, are they voting only in the presidential election? Do they vote only in the local election? What do they do?
I got help with it.
I mean, I picked off-cycle just because I think that, I could see the benefits of having it in the even years. But I think there's just so many elections on the ballot and so many, because these are partisan elections, so many political parties, you know, reaching out. And I just feel like in an off-cycle, it gives us a lot more focus to be able to work to convey the bond, even if it's only a 10%. Because I don't know if you, I mean, the ballot is, you know, it's so long. All the, you know, president, US senate, all the judges, all of the different legislative seats. I mean, there's not, they're not going to, they're going to get to that and they're not going to, in my opinion.
That is off-cycle though.
I hear you arguing that you meant to vote election year. Because we're talking about TOM election year.
Off-cycle is better, 2021 or off-cycle is better.
That's our municipal.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That would be on our cycle.
On our cycle, okay.
So that's just another example of why we want to delve into where there's not sort of consistent, to make sure everybody's talk, and that's easy to have happen. Off-cycle means when we don't have elections, as we described it. And here's probably the most classic example of why you'd want to consider not doing it off-cycle. Because Wake County will have a school bond and a Wake Tech bond and their own Parks and Rec bond. And all of that influences the voter, and then there's ours. So that's just an example.
We can't put in our priority.
Well, the statute was changed just to really create some flexibility for you. And its focus is about really voter turnout. So if, and it depends, patterns are different from one town to the next, just whether the municipal election is going to have the draw for voter turnout or if it's going to be the general election, where you're on the ballot with everything else. That's the reason why the statute changed, was to create that flexibility. So you weren't having to wait. So if something was important and you wanted to get it moving, then you now have that ability to do them on either even or odd years. It was creating limitations for small jurisdictions.
The original legislature. Yeah, so I'm the one who said I would hesitate to limit our options. So I, we could put a policy in place that says we're always going to do it on on-cycle or off-cycle. But I think that limits our ability to be flexible and nimble and create the capacity when we need it. Because things will roll off, things might take longer than we expect. And if we push it off by six months, that means we might have to wait 18 months to do the next bond instead of. So we can do whatever, but I think leaving options open on that are helpful. That's not something we're deciding tonight.
No.
Well, and we will obviously send you this electronically. This is your first time seeing it as you see what, you know, each of you said. It may create more questions or conversation or requests for additional information at a future meeting.
Going back to yours, DJ, like, options open is fine, but at least let's nail it down for this particular bond. Because that's what we are going for. Keeping options open is always a thing for the future that, you know, we are not closing the loop. But I think it is important because it's 3-3 here. So if we can have a consensus on where to go, then that becomes easy for the staff. And we can, we are talking purely for this particular bond.
I think that's fair. I'm in favor of 2020. I don't want to wait any longer. I think we have pent-up demand for projects.
I'm inclined to, I'm going to say, it is, there's merit in what Steve's saying too.
Oh, there's definitely merit. There's pros and cons either way.
So 2020, we are going to get the bond, I think the Wake County bond will come back again. I've been already hearing some.
I expect that as well. And the way Wake County has been approaching things, everything that they add to their budget comes with a tax, even their operations at this point. If they're increasing their operations, they're correlating it to a tax increment increase.
Okay, so is there any research that can be done saying that if the County bond forces municipal bonds, how does it play? Because I don't know the data for that.
So I wrote down a question to myself about voter data, the timing of that, the influences or what you're saying, Wake County has.
I can give you the voter data, but the thing that I'm asking specifically is, how does the bond, municipal bond play with the other, like, we could even have a state bond, you know, we don't know.
It hasn't happened in the past really. So, but I think the point is, we can tell staff we're going to have a bond ready for November and we can always postpone it, if that's how you feel.
What they do doesn't change our needs, is the thing. So we need to, even if maybe it doesn't pass, that doesn't change our needs. So it just means we have to get the money in a more expensive manner.
Yeah, I'm going to say that. The reason I was saying is, like, just thinking loud, if the wave is there, like, there's too much, you know, bonds already in front of us and they, when, they want to take a ding at the lowest denomination, which is a municipal. Okay, oh, after this, oh, I need this. So I don't, that's the reason I'm asking, how the voter looks into it. Because we want any bond to pass, 100%, that's the key for doing this two years of hard work and everything. We don't want any.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for capacity and building our capacity. But I, first of all, I think we're well on our way now to seeing the projects that we put forward in 2012 completed by hopefully the end of 2020. And I think before we put any bond forward, I would like to see, to show the public that we've completed those projects to put the bond. But I believe that there's too many competing, there's too many interests on the ballot. And also because of the, it's a very, this is going to be a very polarizing, very divisive election. And it does concern me about the bond's passing. Because, you know, when we have the focus just on the local voters, then they're not going to have all these other things that they're competing with. I mean, we, this is, in partisan elections, Republican Party might say, don't vote for the bond because it's going to increase the tax. And so you're going to have a lot of people coming and just straight out voting no. So I don't understand why we'd want to do that when we could put something clearly that's focused for the voters of Morrisville to decide and take the time to make sure that we're working out, they're no different than what Carrie's doing in the 2019 bond that they're doing for the transportation. So I just, it looks like I'm outnumbered on this, but I'm sticking through, you know, through that I, I think it's better to wait in the years when we have, when we have our elections.
I agree. That's the reason I was asking, how does that thing play in, you know?
There's just too many, there's too many competing interests and there's too many elections on the ballot. And the polarization of the politics that we're going to see, in my opinion, is going to take away the focus from, you know, this is it. I mean, that's just my opinion. Obviously, some of my colleagues don't agree with me, but that was my reasoning behind it.
I think there's definitely some merit.
And how much of a communication does it work in front of the general election? You know, like the presidential election? How much do we really pump to get our word across? You know, we have this, so we have it get washed out. That's the reason I was asking, you know, how does it play out? You know, that people will just take the state bond and the County bond, and when it comes here, they may go which way.
I mean, Jeannie can speak up. We can get you the general information about municipal bond referendums in Wake County. I don't know that, I don't know that it will tell you anything.
I would venture to say I've never seen a bond referendum not pass at the county level or the city level.
There was, there was an education bond that failed.
Maybe at the state.
No, Wake County, it failed like in 90, it was like 98 or 99.
So one time.
But yes, one time. I agree, one time.
And the transportation transit bond was very close to, it was 51%. It was not like with a massive.
So one other way to look at it is if Wake County is going to be putting forth a bond and raising taxes every year, you better do it sooner rather than later because it's going to get worse.
They're doing it every year. They'll get frustrated, voters might be getting frustrated.
We'll never do it if we're always reacting to that.
You know, and then you have, if you wait, then you have, well, you all just raised my taxes last year with the county. I don't want to raise them, you know, so I think you're, I honestly believe what it all is going to come down to is how we share information with the public. I honestly believe that. And I think if we share it and we get input from the public on to the projects that are most meaningful to them, I think, I think, I'm not worried about support, quite frankly, in 2020, not.
I'm not either.
I think every year, I think that's a fair statement. Every year, you're going to come up with something that could cause you to say, let's take a pause. I think you have to decide the value and the weight and the magnitude that these projects do for your community and take that bold step forward. I think that your people are potentially looking for that. They've told you they have interest and they want to see things brought to fruition. And we can certainly work on the messaging for the projects we are executing and making progress on. That's a messaging thing. That's us showcasing ourselves out in the community and we can do a better job at that. And when we can fit that need, fulfill that need and then feed into that and then now build on to, what are we going to do next? Where do we see that next big great thing that Morrisville's doing?
And I agree, yes. What we are putting in the bond is not competing with the others, you know. We might be putting for a fire station or a park local to our town compared to the overall, like, a school bond, which is for the entire county. So both are non-competing bonds, if I want to look into that.
Okay, any other comments or conversation? That was great. So the last thing we have on our agenda really is just opening up for any other questions or follow-ups that you need just before we close out tonight. I think Martha mentioned next steps. We were going to talk tomorrow, what we're focused on. Did you say Town Center?
Yeah, we will, we expect to just combine, just, I'll call it the raw data from your policy discussions into a document for you to see what each other had to say. Don't feel like, I mean, we could perhaps provide an overview of our observations, but we really want you to look at that to sort of guide the next steps of the process.
Placeholders, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the placeholder policy discussions and really, if we want to talk a little bit about Town Center, fresh off of your land use plan discussion, I would say that would be the most effective use of our time. We are planning on bringing paired comparison type of stuff on October 8th to talk about and, again, continue to layer this on for you over the next several months. We only have one work session on a Monday scheduled after this one, which is October 21st. So we have a break in November and December. And I think I told you, I would potentially be proposing to continue these Mondays in the new year. I mean, I think, I certainly see the value, even though it's another day, of having these types of discussions in this kind of format to helping us move some things along. But that's council's decision to make as we proceed with that. I do have a question to ask about October 21st. And I'll have to communicate with Mayor Protem Scroggins-Johnson, she's not here. At the roundtable last time, Councilmember Johnson proposed requesting Donna come back to continue the strategic discussion of the things that were on the wall, how to effectively handle meetings. This is, this is, this is structure, I think, versus, I'll call it rehash of stuff, but structure that works effectively for us to manage our work and our meetings. I have spoken to Donna and she is available on two days for your consideration. One is October 21st, which is a meeting that you have on your schedule, so would not require an additional meeting, however it is during the election cycle, which is another thing that we heard. The other date she is available is November 16th, which is a Saturday. It is after the election, but she could be available that day for a three-hour something to finish that work if council wanted to consider that. So at this point, both of those dates are on hold. I don't know if there's a general consensus. I know some of you may not have your calendars here, but I know there's nothing town scheduled on that day. And it's a week and a half before the Thanksgiving holiday. But if there's consensus for the 21st, then we'll move our workload around and have it then. If you want to have it after the election, it would, I would ask you to look at that Saturday. And they're just on hold, so I can get back with her. And I would like to get back with her as quickly as possible.
I think it's an important conversation. I think I can do either of those.
I can do either. I would prefer the 21st, October 21st, but I can do either one.
I think 16th, I don't know, I have to look at that. But 16th makes more logical sense because by then we know the election results and we know, you know, we will be suddenly getting one new person. So we can include that as part of the conversation. So they're all studying that.
Now, I don't expect this to be with a new council member. I expect, as it was put forth, it was for existing council. So even if, and we know there's going to be a new council member, that person, unless you invited them, would not be, they were not part of that initial.
I agree.
I think you said structure, right? If it's structured, the 21st, that's a week, that's a regular day. And then we can go from there, the 16th, if you, we decide we want something else. As long as we're talking structure and not rehashing old stuff.
Yeah, I was, I was, this is the feedback that Donna facilitated you getting. And I, we can, we can resend that, but this was the stuff that was up on the wall.
That's right.
How to run a more efficient meeting.
Correct. You know, what are you looking for from the mayor? What is the mayor looking for from you? You know, you know, what are we looking for? But it was the feedback you put up on the wall.
It was just the very final piece of that work that we never completed. So I'm not rehashing anything. We already have that work.
Well, your Monday work session is three hours. I would propose postponing a roundtable and using the three hours for that. So you'd be So you'd be timestamped as well for a three-hour session, that Donna would know how to prepare for that.
Do we even need that much?
You could hold that off sessions.
Well, that's, that's up to you, not up to me.
I think we need three hours, but anyhow.
And we could, you could, you could add on a roundtable if you were done.
Were you okay with the 21st in that case? We're just working on structure?
Yeah, 21st, you are anyway coming here, so, but I hate to lose a roundtable opportunity too. So that's, that's the thing.
And we haven't, we, we sort of, we're working on the rolling calendar, because I did want to ask this question to, to layer some things around it. So one of, a couple of the things are things that Jeannie and I have for CIP. Greg and Giselle are working on Pew House stuff that we want to talk to you about, but it's, it's not an urgent matter as much as you need to hear it, but we can place that somewhere else and coordinate.
So can we have a roundtable on the 22nd? Because at least, we can take one of the two items out.
Do you pull it up real quick?
So at least you.
And if we don't need all the three hours, we could be prepared to talk about the roundtable late on the 21st.
Now, and, and we've put, we've put CIP on the 8th. Aaron had made a suggestion about moving the roundtable up to the 8th, and, but I knew we were going to be bringing the CIP. So I, that's another option, but.
So for the 22nd, there's one tentative work session at this time that, that we're still having some discussion about. So if council wanted to move the roundtable to the 22nd and hold the 21st.
Is that the other budget discussion? So we could move that one.
And hold the 21st for that discussion with the outside facilitator. Move your roundtable to the 22nd, but there's no issue with that. We can certainly do that.
Take the night off.
So, Councilmember Ray, you're into the 21st? I can confirm with Mayor Pro Tem. But it is a day that you're already here, so.
Okay. So circling back to the CIP stuff, it sounds like tomorrow night, we'll get a first look at everyone's placeholder policy thoughts. And so if we can all commit to sort of taking a look at that and seeing where each other are at before the 8th, and then you'll have a lot of other things synthesized on the 8th, we can have a really great discussion on the 8th. Is that kind of a plan forward? Or did staff have anything else at this time?
No, thank you very much.
We're in good shape to adjourn then, for less than two hours, entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 5-0 unanimously. Thank you very much, all.
We send you electronic copy.